Seven oh one, time for the Eastline Planning Meeting. I think we need two alternates today, so Kevin and... Congratulations. Okay, first off, we'll do a roll call from right to left, Brian.
Brian Baumbach.
Nick Menepis.
Kevin Mills.
Rich Gordon.
Cindy Collins.
Tim LeDucer.
Thank you. Now time for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Next up, call for any additions to the agenda. Do we have any additions?
I do not have any.
No. Okay. Next up is a call for public delegations. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications submitted to a decision by the commission. A public hearing or in litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments. Any... okay. Next up is reports, communications. Do you have any zoning liaisons on? I did attend one zoning meeting last month and they approved the text amendment to the, for downtown Niantic, mixed use for mixed use. It was five to one on the vote for that. That was a major issue they had at that meeting. There's, you know, there's discussion, but it went through. And they also approved a permit for Domino's, I think in the shopping center down, going towards, you know, stop and shop around there. Was there another zoning meeting?
It was one Thursday. I'm attending this Thursday.
Okay. Did anybody attend the other meetings? Have you had another meeting since? That's without one meeting. Okay, okay. Ex officio, Don McKenzie, do you have any updates?
Good evening. I think the best thing I can bring you tonight is, I had our last meeting at Board of Selectmen, Water and Sewer and our Public Works made a very nice presentation. You can view the whole presentation online. But what was mostly about sewer capacity and increasing the costs associated with it, the towns that are involved with it, by using New London as, you know, I always wondered why the pumping station was next to my business, and that was to pump it up loggerhill, you know, because it's all gravity and stuff. So anyway, a lot, a lot of good stuff in that presentation. But the number that impressed me the most, it was a short meeting, but only thirty-five percent of the people in this town are hooked up to sewers right now. And we're fighting for capacity. And also, I think the number was thirteen percent. Anytime the towns get together and want to put it in, put more sewer work in, we have about thirteen, we're liable for about thirteen percent of the cost of that. So I asked a question, and they get quite the right answer, if all sudden Water would want to put in two hundred units somewhere, do we have to help contribute to raise that mark for sewer, or is it just them? Anyway, you can see that presentation, it was a wonderful presentation by Water and Sewer and our Public Works. That's about it, it was a short meeting, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions about the... no. Thank you. Next up, planning director Gary Gaischel, do you have any updates?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thanks. Subcommittee reports, we don't have any. Chairperson reports. Sam Sims submitted his resignation as an alternate for the planning commission. We thank Sam for his, you know, public service and his work for the planning commission. I'm sorry letting go, but I think we have, we have, later in the meeting, on the agenda, we'll discuss, you know, somebody to replace Sam. Sam unfortunately had, well, not unfortunately, but he was busy with other activities, and he's also planning to move to another town, so he was unable to continue. Next up is approval of minutes. The meeting minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty-five, any discussion? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes for June tenth, so moved. Thank you. Second. Any other discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? No. Passed six to zero. Public hearings, we don't have any today. Today, we have one scheduled for August with English Harbor, Kristen Clark, Kristen Harbor, English Harbor Capital Partners. That was an application for a six lots re-subdivision of six point five acres of land located at two thirty-seven Upper Patagansett Road in Eastline, zone RU forty for rural residential. We received the application on June tenth, so we have sixty-five days to hold a public hearing. Deadline is August fourteenth, so we can hold a public hearing on August twelfth. Should be good there. Zoning referrals, we don't have any. Municipal referrals, we don't have any. Gary, do you have anything? Okay, old business subdivision regulations, section four, application submission procedure. Gary, do you have any updates on that?
So I, at the last meeting, I handed out those current, lengthy documents from the county attorney's review. I don't know if you had a chance to review it. I've also had, I'm going through it. I could put my own thoughts together and itemize them and bring them back to the commission, but I didn't spend a lot of time working on it to get, make revisions according, based on what the county attorney prepared.
Okay.
I think for discussion purposes here.
Okay.
If any of you have any thoughts about the current language and what the county attorney maybe has said regarding the changes, and I want to share them with you.
Okay.
No worries.
Okay.
So hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have something more substantial to review.
Okay. So if you have any thoughts, we can call you or email you.
I'm just kind of amazed and how I was trying to make an amendment to one small section, which is a larger.
Yeah, it's been going on a while, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's all I have on the subdivision rates. And then, you have the second item there.
Okay.
On the determination, subdivision re-subdivision. I met with Paul Gary today, and Mr. Torrance, who's here, he can shed a little more light, he does represent the land trust, or he's familiar with the proportional plan, that's the other half of the total land is retained by the land trust. So they're going to be a party to whatever happens.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, Jeff, certainly ask them now. And then discuss moving forward with lot line revision. Some minor discrepancy between definitions, re-subdivision and lot line revision. Those two set section four, that's seven of our regulations, and then section two, which is the definition. Take a look at the language very closely. I think after discussions with Attorney Gary, I think the commission could be right to approve a lot line revision.
Sure.
So, I've got a statistic. That's just my standing letter from Art. Just authorizing to act on behalf. Here's a copy for everyone of the parcel in question. Here's a sort of the actual plan of that. So, this is roughly, Jeff Torrance, one ninety-seven Upper Patagansett Road, Eastline.
So the land trust came into possession of this property back in December. And it was conditioned, the acquisition was conditioned upon conveying out a portion of the property and retaining the rest for open space. So if you look at the, the green, this map here, that parcel, the entire red outlined parcel is about four acres, plus or minus, and the green area is a little less than three acres. And so this was part of the heritage subdivision, and the open space in that subdivision was conveyed in a number of transactions, beginning in nineteen eighty-eight. And the original conveyance was for twenty acres as part of the phase one of that subdivision. There was a phase two, and most of that property, in phase two, all but three lots, right, three acres or something that we figured out today, was conveyed into open space. The town has a conservation easement on a hundred and sixty-five of that two hundred-plus acres, so the total, the total open space for the subdivision, which was three hundred acres in size, three twenty, is over two hundred so far. So they've more than met their ten percent requirement. So this parcel was conveyed to, along with two others, to KSK Associates based back in two thousand eight-ish. And, and there was some reference on maps that this was going to go into open space, but it was never conveyed into open space, and there's no records in the town as it relates to, to, to why it was never conveyed. There was a parcel that was conveyed that Gary has up on the, on the map right now. That's the, the two parcels totaling about twenty acres that was conveyed in, as part of the phase one subdivision. So fast forward to now, the, and we looked today, because I attended the meeting with, with the landowners, the land trust, on behalf of the land trust, with the landowner's attorney, Paul Gary, and Gary, and the zoning definition of a lot was, you have that, is kind of all-inclusive. So this particular parcel, this four-acre parcel, was conveyed to Mr. Harney, KSK Associates. He paid taxes on it, so it hadn't been conveyed as open space. It wasn't necessary to convey, because they had conveyed other parcels. And in my former life as a developer, I'm familiar with that, because we did that all the time in the Darrows Ridge and Nottingham subdivisions, where we would identify, before Gary got here, the way that we used to do it was we would identify areas that open space could be placed, and they were kind of like a placeholder. And, and then you'd go back at a later point in time, and as the subdivision developed, because they were all done in phases, and, and so, you know, and then, working with this commission, we'd say, okay, we'll keep that one, but we won't keep this one, and we want this instead of that, and, you know, it was kind of a trade-off of things. You know, the most notable in terms of not this subdivision, but, but is Nottingham Hills, where, where in that subdivision, we actually owned a piece of property that abutted Aunt Ruth Sternpike, and we conveyed the property to the town that allowed for the Goodwin Trail to get built. That was the impetus of, that's where I met Art Carlson back in twenty twenty-two, or, no, I'm sorry, two thousand and two, right, and, and so, in any event, and I think that we've provided case law to the, to the point that if there is not a formal written dedication, the mere fact that it shows up on a map doesn't close the loop on the dedication requirements. And the town, through this commission, did accept other properties for open space in this particular subdivision, which, which we believe would be in lieu of, you know, this, this thing. So the, the area in green on this map is, is going to be in open space. The land trust is willing, the town owns, has a conservation easement on a hundred and sixty-five acres. Do you have that map? That abuts this. The land trust is willing to convey it to the town in fee. The land trust is willing to put a conservation easement that mirrors the conservation easement that's on the hundred and sixty-five acres. Yeah, it's that one. You just passed it. No, go back. There's a map. Right there. So all that, all that blank area, see where he's got his cursor? Yeah, yeah. So the town, the state has a conservation easement on that parcel there. The town has a conservation easement on that hundred and sixty-five acres, which was, was going to be phase two of this, this subdivision. In addition to, to the... Yeah, there's five acres there, and then down further, there's, probably isn't on that particular map, there's another twenty. And there's a piece just up above that, that the, the land trust is, the piece in the middle between the lots there, down, down below. Keep going, keep going to the left. There's, anyways, there's two other pieces out there that, that the land trust is in the process of getting the deed, that their land trust would be more than happy to convey to the town as well, that were stragglers, so to speak, in that particular subdivision. So, so when we looked at the definition, so what, what has happened, when, when you create these parcels of land, and I can show you in two instances, in Nottingham Hills, the way that, that, that this commission used to, to do it was that you would create these parcels that had not been dedicated as open space yet, that were potentially available to be dedicated as open space. And the assessor would, would assign, you know, they were a lot, they weren't a buildable lot, so to speak, and, but they were nonetheless a parcel of land on which the landowner would pay property taxes. And that's the case with, with this land over on Cedar Brook and Catbird. That was the case in Nottingham Hills, and I'm giving you that as a reference document to demonstrate how this commission, what this commission used to require. When Gary came in, they changed the regulations to eliminate that practice, so that, that you weren't creating these, these, these parcels of, of land that, that, you know, were, were lots, albeit not buildable. What we did do at Nottingham Hills is, is on the left-hand side of the entrance, there was a forty-foot strip that went up, that was adjacent to Nottingham Hills. I owned the parcel in back of it, as well as the house in the front. We added some land to the strip on the left. We created a lot through a lot line revision plan that I gave you a copy of. And on the right-hand side, there's another strip that was recently conveyed to the land trust by my business partner. He had owned that particular strip of land. So I think we believe, the land trust believes that, that because this is a parcel of land that, that, that exists, that, that the lot line revision is the appropriate way to go, because it's an existing lot of record. And, and how do you subdivide an existing lot? Now, the lot line revision does two things, right? It separates, formally separates the, the green area on this map from the white area on this map, number one. And then, and then the second thing that happens is that the, the owner of the unshaded area would have to demonstrate site feasibility, just like you would for a subdivision. So if you look at section four dash seven dash one of your regulations, the definition of a lot line revision and the definition of a re-subdivision are pretty darn close in narrative descriptions. I think that's the, the point that we, we got to this morning. And then when you look at the definition under the zoning regulations, that, that, of what constitutes, you know, a lot, right? The, the description in that tends to demonstrate that, that, that this should be done as, as a lot line revision. So what does that require? So what that requires that the applicant do, and I have a copy of the, the plan that they prepared, which is, is not a, it's not stamped yet. Because we didn't know what, so this commission makes a decision. So you have to demonstrate site feasibility for a lot line revision, just like you would for a subdivision or a re-subdivision. And what does that require? That requires that an application be submitted. In this case, it would be signed by both the Eastline Land Trust and the Hathaway Farm entity. And Hathaway Farm would, would be required, as they have done on this map, to demonstrate that it, that the parcel conforms to the RU forty zone, because that's where it's located in. So that, that would require that the parcel be forty thousand square feet. It's more than that. It would require that it has a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. It does. And it would require that Ledge Light Health District sign off on that site plan, demonstrating a feasible septic area, which they have done. So I think what, what the land trust, I'm not speaking for the Hathaway Farm people, I'm speaking for the land trust, what the land trust would, 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 would like the commission to do is, is, is to, I guess, as, as, as a way to bring finality to this, agree that a lot line revision is the, the proper way to go. And, and as part of that application, the, the land trust would, would, like, as I said earlier, would do one of two things with this pre-shaded area. It would either deed that property to the town in fee, or it would put a conservation easement on that property in favor of the town. So, anybody have any, if I've not totally confused everybody, but...
Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I'm getting a little lost here, where the, where the issues come up with the land is set to be open space, but it's never formally conveyed to the town or to the land trust by that manner.
Right. So the process used to be, right, because, because when, back in the nineties and early two thousands, when, when I was developing here, right, they, they, we didn't know where, where, how the configuration of lots was ever going to work out, and, and where the best locations for the open space was going to be. So you, you have that, the ability to do that in your current regulations, which is, is to defer the dedication of open space until a point in the future. And it's especially true on these bigger parcels of land. So if you look at this subdivision, which was three hundred acres, or you look at Darrows Ridge or Nottingham Hills, which was, which were both part of a six hundred acre parcel of, of land, the commission at that point in time wasn't focused on, they were more focused on where the best locations for that open space was, was going to be, as opposed to, we, we want it right now, right? So in, in the case of, as, I'll give you an example, in this particular subdivision, the only parcel that they were interested in was the land that surrounded Latimer Brook, right? And that's where those two parcels totaling twenty acres were located. And that, that was the only parcel that was formally dedicated, meaning that there was a conveyance of either in fee or a conservation easement on those properties. And, and again, as I said, as it relates to Nottingham Hills, we, we gave nothing for open space. We deferred it for the first two phases of the subdivision, because we were focused with this commission on the bigger prize, which was, was the, the land that abutted Aunt Ruth Sternpike, that, that we were in the process of acquiring. And, and that we had agreed to convey, was it forty-five acres or so, to, to the town. And that was what Art Carlson and Wayne Frazier, who was the first selectman at the time, used as, as, as the impetus to get Yale on board with, with, with the, with the Goodwin Trail. So, so that's, that's how it happens, right, is, is there, it wasn't, it was kind of like a placeholder. We can demonstrate that we can put open space here, here, and here, right? And, and, and then as the, as the subsequent phases of the subdivision came about, then, then the, the commission would decide, this commission, would decide where they wanted that open space to actually be. And, and it's a little bit different, because your, this commission isn't typically dealing with large tracts of land, you know, anymore, in, in terms of subdivision. You're getting ten acres or fifteen acres. You're getting 10 acres or 15 acres. This Nottingham Hills and Darrows Ridge was 600 acres. This one was 330. So that's what happened here. It was never formally dedicated, and in the absence of that, it doesn't exist as a matter of law.
Okay. And this is probably a little out of the scope of what we're saying, but I just...
No, no.
I guess I just could look, because it feels like we're being asked that we should be honoring this dedication of 1988, or what was supposed to happen, but we shouldn't be considering the way that land was allocated to be open space at the time. Or am I misunderstanding?
Right. Well, I think what you're missing is that neither this commission nor the town, but really this commission, never required the formal dedication of some of these other parcels as open space, and in fact, accepted other parcels instead, right? So they were really placeholders. You know, this is where we could put some open space. We could put five acres here and three acres here. And once Gary came in, there was a change in how open space was thought of. So if you look at all the subdivisions in town, you know, you've got all these small, and I'm talking pre-Gary. So pre-Gary, they were smaller parcels chopped up all over the place, you know, within the context of a subdivision. And typically, it was undevelopable land, right? And so when Gary came in and we were working with him, the focus was more about creating large blocks of open space. That's where your conservation design development regulation came in. The focus completely changed as to how this commission, you know, identified and open space and how it required, you know, the developer. And most of the time, it was in dealing with Gary where you would just say, does this make sense to you? And then we'd bring it to the commission. So it wasn't like anybody had any anticipation at any time that... We were probably a little bit more thorough than this developer in terms of quantifying that, but it's essentially the same thing that occurred within a 10-year period of time, right? And it was the same people that were in Gary's position at that time that were responsible for this type of stuff occurring. Yeah. So it wasn't, and from the perspective of a lot line revision, you know, your regulations four dash seven dash two requires, you know, there to be public notice. It gets advertised, the decision gets advertised at the applicant's expense as opposed to the town's expense, right? In the newspaper, there's rights to appeal the decision, just like there is for a subdivision or a re-subdivision. So I think that the point we got to in the meeting with Gary today was, since it was a parcel that was created, that it already exists, a lot line revision was an appropriate method, subject to this commission's approval, the way to go. Because if we're going to re-subdivide it, we're re-subdividing something that already exists. You know, we're not creating an additional lot out of it. We're merely demonstrating site, we're not the land trust, but the applicant, the co-applicant, is demonstrating site feasibility on their portion of the property.
Basically, our determination is whether it would require a subdivision application or just a revision, or is...
Well, it's still an application.
Right, the revision application.
Right. So a lot line revision application is, requires essentially the same documentation as a re-subdivision application. It's the exact same thing. It's just the method.
And the planning commission still have to vote to approve it, or?
So, yeah, so I just wanted to back up just a little bit and just read you the definition of a lot, of the zoning code. And that defines a lot as a plot or parcel of land occupied or capable of being occupied by one principal building and the accessory buildings or uses customarily incidental to it, including such open spaces as are required by these regulations. There's some additional language about cases of multiple dwellings, real dwellings, and additional portion of land. Then I want to jump over to section two of our regulations, two dash two dash 17, definition of re-subdivision. I'll just read that for you. And that defines a re-subdivision to change in a map of an approved or recorded subdivision for re-subdivision. If such change A, affects any street layout shown on such map, this does not give a request, or B, affects any area reserved thereon for public use, or C, diminishes the size of any lot shown thereon and creates an additional building lot, tip any of the lots shown thereon having been conveyed after the approval or recording of such map pursuant to general statutes as amended. So B, whether or not it affects an area reserved thereon for public use, while it was identified as open space, it was never formally conveyed. So I would say B was not applicable. And C is, it does diminish the size of the division of land that has occurred, I should say, that the land trust has conveyed this portion back to English Harbor Associates.
Hathaway Farm.
I'm sorry. Hathaway Farm. Oh, I see. It does, well, it does diminish the size of the lot shown thereon. Is it necessarily creating an additional building lot? I think the potential to build upon it exists, but is it, I think Gary's argument is that it's an existing lot. So I think that's the question. And as I left it with Attorney Gary, was that I advise him to make an application for a lot line revision. And I think a question will be this commission's determination whether or not it's creating an additional building lot or it's a lot line revision. But with that said, section four dash seven dash one, I'll leave that to you regarding revision of lot configurations. Any change in the geometrical configuration of a lot or lots on an approved subdivision map filed or reported to the town clerk shall be subject to review and approval by the director of planning for performance with these regulations. If the proposed revisions result in substantially different on- and off-site impacts, the plan shall be forwarded to the planning commission for approval. So with that, I did advise him, I submitted an application for a lot line revision. I would refer it to this commission, because I'm not as comfortable with the determination. But I think it's, in my opinion, somewhat of a substantial change from what people have used to see on my lot filed in the clerk's office, even though it's not dedicated to open space. So at least at some level, that decision is made in a public forum by this commission. Who has the ultimate authority to determine whether or not it's a subdivision or a re-subdivision?
Right. And the other point I would make, and I think you've heard this before, that, because the land trust has done it on several occasions. So under Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 176, Section eight dash 18, land trusts have the ability that, well, there's an exemption in the statute for land being conveyed for open space purposes. And so from the land trust's perspective, this land in its entirety was the remaining land left in the subdivision, and that the green area that was carved out in December of this year was what we, Gary and at least I have been referring to as a conservation cut, that is exempt from coming to this commission to do. You just file a map. And this occurred on property that was conveyed to the land trust in Nottingham Hills, about 40 acres there. It was done in this subdivision on that map that Gary previously brought up. It was done with the Hathaway property just a year ago, where there was a small parcel left over, right? When the conveyance to, you know, from the land trust to the town occurred. And there was, and up on Upper Walnut Hill in Holmes Road, same thing occurred, where the landowner who had, who owned 330 acres, conveyed 301 to the land trust and kept 20, the remaining land. So I think that that's an important, when we're talking about the, you know, how it got down to one acre, it's important to understand that from the land trust's perspective, for conservation purposes, they were allowed as a matter of law to convey, you know, to essentially subdivide this parcel, lack of a better description, through an exemption that exists in the Connecticut General Statutes.
So basically, reading the regulations, if their revision results in substantially different on- and off-site impacts, the plan still should be forwarded to the planning commission for approval. So they would submit the revisions to you, and you would...
My understanding is that Attorney Gary, on behalf of the applicant, the landowner, the land trust, will submit an application...
To this commission.
To this commission for a lot line revision.
Right.
And then they'll be looking for a decision from the commission as to whether it's just like a subdivision or a re-subdivision. If this commission determines that it meets the definition of a re-subdivision, then they may have to turn around and apply for a re-subdivision. But that can be hashed out in discussions with their application.
Right. So the way that the discussion that we had today is that the application's going to be, that we would submit to this commission, and as opposed to Gary, who has the authority under the regulations to approve a lot line revision, we would bring this up, this application, which would be a joint application of the East Lime Land Trust and Hathaway Farm, to do a lot line revision of this parcel. And incorporated in that would be the formal dedication. Gary just needs to get back to us, meaning the land trust, with the decision. He needed to talk to somebody, Alex or...
I asked him, he said, prescribed for granted rights, so I don't know, but maybe just an easement. But he doesn't really have a decision.
But again, that becomes, this way, it's more formal in terms of, it's not being done administratively, so it can't be criticized. It'd be done in public, and the commission, again, once we understand what Gary's looking for, you know, in terms of a conservation easement or a deed, you know, that we could bring before the commission, and then it would be a requirement or a condition of approval that a conservation easement or a deed to the town, as the case may be, be a part of the approval, if that's what you decided to do.
Anybody have any questions or comments? You know, I'm comfortable as long as we have the ability to, you know, review an application, determine if a subdivision is required, and, you know, a public hearing if necessary. Were there any comments or questions? No?
And I think in terms of a lot line revision, as I said earlier, you did add a section to your regulations in four dash seven dash two that requires publication and gives the public appeal rights if they don't like your decision, right? So, you know, bringing, as opposed to bringing it just to Gary, who could, who could, has the authority under, you know, from you to do it, we said we'd bring it to the commission as a whole and let you guys make the decision.
Which I feel more comfortable, again, as I said, because you can see, here's our GIS, and the open space, what's highlighted in red was one of those parcels that were conveyed, and the other one was just right here to the south. So this area, you can see it's subdivisioned open space, but this is just a conservation easement. And while it was identified on our tax map as open space for years, and it functioned that way, it technically was not. It was part of this lot.
And it became part of the three lots that were created?
These one, two, three, these three lots at the end, actually owned, you can see their parcel lines extended here, it's the only closer. You'll see that they extend right to the green there and there. So this portion is all part of this lot.
And the parcel, if you scroll down on your GIS, there's another parcel to the left of, what is it, Egrit there, further up, that's still owned by, to the left of Egrit, right there, you just had the cursor. That parcel right there is still owned by Northern Business Capital.
This one?
Yeah.
According to the East Lime...
Yeah. You know, they don't, that was never conveyed. And so they own that, and then a small piece, I gave you that map, the small piece down across on the other side of Cedar Brook. And we spoke to the Kavanousky, he's passed away, but his daughter, who lives in California, that parcel right there. No, actually, it's across from Cedar Brook, that parcel right there, where you got, right there. So punch that, see?
That's supposed to be all that.
No. So there's a parcel in there that was never conveyed, that's still owned by Northern Business Capital. She's willing, we just became aware of it, we contacted her. She said she'd give us, the land trust, a deed. The land trust doesn't necessarily care whether they get the deed or the town gets the deed, you know? If they, she gives the deed to the land trust if the town wants it, the town can have it. Otherwise, the land trust will just put a conservation easement on it. But it was another parcel that was never, was identified as potential open space, but was never formally dedicated.
And does this feature a triple I here?
That's, yeah. So if you look at the map, I'll go over it with you, and we can show the commission in the next meeting. But, yeah, so there's two parcels, two additional parcels in that subdivision that were never conveyed out, that were identified as open space. This particular parcel in the five acres that Gary was just talking about on Egrit were actually conveyed to KSK Associates. They were sold to them without any restrictions. So, anyway. So from our perspective, I think what we've agreed with is that there would be a joint application, it would be submitted to Gary, that would show up on your agenda, I guess, in August, right?
Yeah, I think that was our, that was to be ordered.
And then you folks can do what you guys do.
Gary, do you have any further discussion you need to do with the town attorney on this issue?
Certainly, I'd like to let Attorney Gary know that, you know, the waiver... Um, certainly, I'd like to, uh, let Attorney Gary know that, you know, the way we're navigating forward with this particular piece, because he had looked at it, he did enter in his own opinion.
Right.
As in the material at the last meeting. So we'll go back and see if, you know, the approach with a lot line revision is anything different, and if these things, like definitions, or anything that we need to be aware of.
Right.
Certainly, we can ask him to weigh in on the application for guidance.
Okay. Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, it's a complicated issue, that's, that's a lot of legal ramifications that took place, you know, thirty, forty year period, it's kind of.
And, 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 you know, as, as, the, the problem, right, is, is, like in Nottingham Hills, I, I know what we did there because I was a part of it, right? In this particular application, they, there, there is no, like nowadays, you, you record in the land records the, you know, every time you change your, your zoning regulations or your playing, your subdivision regulations. They didn't do that back then, they don't exist. So, and there's no minutes, and they're, you know, because the, the, this happened so long ago, right? That, and as, as Attorney Gary said in, in his letter, you know, in the first paragraph, he says that, I don't have a copy of the regulations that were in place at that point in time. Because nobody does, because they don't.
Well, I, I think there are copies of nineteen fifty, I had a copy going back to nineteen fifty, various iterations of the regs. So I think there are copies that are at least filed, regulations. To how, you know, how well, how often does the town change the regs, I don't know. Attorney Gary did ask me for them, I said I don't have them at my fingertips, I tracked them down. Uh, you said that one. So, you know, whether that would make a difference, I, I, I don't know. I mean, looking at the open space, just here, you, you can see how, you know, they touch the roads. I think that was intended for pedestrian access, public access, kind of, you know, is my guess, the way these things kind of line up. I think they're probably thinking some sort of hiking trail or something was supposed to be between there. But that being said.
That's what they, and, and, you know, what they ended up with, it was exactly that, a different configuration, because the hundred and sixty-five acres has hiking trails in them.
So, you know, that's, that being said, you know, again, the land was not conveyed as an open space. Which if, if the attempt back in eighty-eight was supposed to have been conveyed, it wasn't, yeah, nothing we can do about it at this point, but no way to determine if, in fact, it was supposed to be conveyed. I, I suspect, it's my, my hallucination, that it was.
It's, it's, it's interesting that the one parcel that was conveyed specifically says on it that it was going to be. So that those two parcels down, that, that, that abut Latimer Brook on both sides, the, the map that was, was, and the deed says to be conveyed to the town of East Lime. You know, parcel to, parcels to be conveyed to the town of East Lime. So there was a distinction in how that they were referenced, for whatever reason, they did it that way. They did follow through on, on, on that piece, they didn't on anything else, so. Okay, so if nobody else, any other questions, we'll submit a application to Gary, or a joint application, okay? All right.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, further discussion next meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the alternate vacancy that I noted previously. Sam submitted resignation. We have one individual, Nina Franco, who is happy that she's volunteered to, you know, go to the vacant, to go to the vacant position. Again, we have, Sam submitted his resignation letter at the end of June, so we have thirty days from that time to take action, otherwise it goes to the board of selectmen. So we would have to, you know, take action at this meeting, and if not, it would go to the board of selectmen. Nina, I've been discussing with Nina, I've received emails from her, and she seems, you know, fully qualified to handle the position as alternate. She was a high school teacher in New Jersey, she was, worked for the park system, and she worked in the after-school program, and she gave nature presentations to school groups. Nina, did anything else you wanted to add, or, or comment?
I've lived in this town now for twenty years, and so impressed by the whole town.
Right.
I moved up to Salem two thousand and one for a couple of years, but when my life changed, the first thing I did, I, I lived in Nyantik for a year, and then I moved up to Salem for a short time. My kids were in the high school, so. And as soon as my life changed a little bit, I came straight back down to Nyantik. I always thought it was so lovely here, and everything was so well-run. And so I came right back, got a nice little house over by Gordon Pond. And friends will say, oh, you're retired now, why don't you go to Florida? Why don't you go, go to Arizona? I was like, oh, my dead body, I can't think of a place that's better run. You know, they tell me about their experiences there, and I'm like, oh, I'm so sorry. They have to live in gated communities, and, you know, they talk about, you know, their homeless problems, and all these other problems they have, and I'm like, I haven't seen any of them in East Lime, any major problems. So this place is the best. So, and I started thinking, now, what can I do for the community? So I started going to meetings, and when they said they needed volunteers, I said, well, what can I do for the community? And here I am, want to help out.
Great, great.
We appreciate your willingness to volunteer for public service. Were any, anybody have any questions or comments, or?
Excited to have our.
Motion?
Make a motion to accept Nina Franco. Nina Franco as a alternate position, right?
Yes, planning alternate.
Planning alternate position.
I think I have to do the, any other nominations thing, right here? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? No? Do you have any motion to close the nominations?
I'll make a motion to close debates, expose our nominations, and move to a vote.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Second?
All in favor? Close the nomination? Okay, all opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Nope. Okay, so we have also the nomination, we have a motion to nominate Nina Franco for the alternate position for the planning commission. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, congratulations. So I guess we have to send a letter to the board of selectmen, or just?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll judge her.
Sure.
Why don't you email them this morning at one in the morning?
What?
You can email them at one in the morning.
Why do you listen to this? Because I'm very busy, I'm very busy, Steve, I, when you get to my age, you go to the bathroom at four in the morning, and I check my emails, oh, I better respond to this. I had a busy day the next day, so I know to respond, but.
I have an email that reports on the deal, I have to jump by email to give you your other contact information, so we have it.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Franco, thanks for waiting for a reasonable hour to respond.
Yes.
I didn't expect a response at that time, but, you know. All right. When you get to the chairperson, you're going to, because you're very busy, you can't talk to anyone. Okay, I guess there's nothing else on the agenda, I can entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.